Good evening. Thanks, everybody. It's an exciting night. We even have DJs here tonight. We can all get started. Have a seat if you like. I'd like to call to order the May 8th Venter City Commission meeting. If I can have everyone rise for the flag salute. I hear Lance is in the background. Good to see you. Good to hear you, Lance.
Yep. Sorry, guys, I'm gonna miss an exciting night in Venter. Congratulations to Chief and Captain. Work, work calls.
Understood. Thanks for zooming in. Hang on one second. I have a little technical difficulty here. There we go. No mouse. Lisa, can I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Here.
Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Kribel?
Here. Lisa, would you please read the open public meetings announcement?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Lisa, would you please leave the live stream announcement?
The city of Venter offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access as a convenience to the public. In the event remote access is unavailable for any reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue remote access at the discretion of the city for any future meetings.
Thank you. Prior to our regular meeting, we have two resolutions. The first of which will be Resolution 2025-149, Resolution Appointing Louis Cabo to Police Captain. If you could. Yeah, sure. Lou, did you come up?
Oh, we gotta pass a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion.
Second.
Lisa, can I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. And we'll do the second resolution now, and then we'll swear them both in. Second resolution is 2025-150, Resolution Appointing David Gekel as Police Captain. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Lisa, and a roll call?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're gonna square in the chief first. So we're gonna do the chief first.
Okay.
And then we'll do Lou, and then we'll do David.
Alright. We're gonna do the chief first. I solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Chief of Police, according to the best of my skills and ability, so help me God. I, Louis Cabo.
I, Louis Cabo.
Do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the same and to the governments established
And to the governments established.
in the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully,
Faithfully.
partially
Partially.
and justly perform
Justly perform.
all the duties
All the duties.
of the office of Police Captain, according to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God.
I do. I do the wrong. Raise your right hand. I, David Gekel.
I, David Gekel.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the same
To the same.
and to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
in the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
and partially
And partially.
and justly perform
Justly perform.
all the duties of
All the duties of
the office of Police Captain.
The office of Police Captain.
according to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my skills and ability, so help me God.
Would you like to take some pictures in front of the base? You're more than welcome to as a group, or?
Amy, no recommendations. I remember my first audit with them. It was, um, what's his name? I can't think of his name now. I just love him. Anyway, yeah, Garcia.
I love him.
And I rewrote the management letter. He's like, you rewrote the management letter? I'm like, what is wrong?
I was just gonna pick him off a page.
Believe it. But what did I know? I was like, so new at it. Like, you made correction. You basically did the same thing by making corrections. It's wrong, it's wrong.
They wanted to move forward.
No, they can't. And so what did the legislature say?
It said, you have a lot of money.
Like millions?
I turned it off.
I remember. Okay.
Lance, you still there?
I am.
Okay.
Like, we'll go out to party?
Presentation.
Probably went out to talk to Sarkis. Okay. Wait. Name.
Oh, Tim's here.
One, just one.
Just one.
Gotta stay open. Looking at us like, why?
No, she's like, I don't know.
Open public meeting. Like, because it's an open public meeting.
Open public meeting.
The door has to be open.
Clear the hall over there. Few more minutes, another minute.
The first one to do it. You're not the first one to do it. Yeah, I know. No, 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 no. Open a door.
Just leave a crack. There we go. That's open. Alright. Jim, could you leave the door open when you leave? It's gotta stay open. Yeah, leave it open. And clear the hall for us. Alright, we'll struggle through it with the left foot and right. Tell them the first round's on the chief. Whoever gets. Okay. So moving through the agenda, we had Department Head Reports. I believe we don't have any yet, but we are gonna start that soon. Capitol Discussion. We do not have the following. Following items are scheduled for action. In the Commission Portionist Meeting, we will have minutes from the March 27th Regular Meeting and the March 27th Executive Meeting. The public hearing will be carried over from the April 24th, 2025, and adoption. Do you wanna clarify that for me? This is the Venter Professional Campus, Lance?
Sure. So we have not received the official amended plan yet. I did meet with Jack Plakter and David Waxman today. Got kind of a feel of what they're gonna come back with. And they asked us to be prepared to accept them to come in for the public hearing and hopeful adoption on May 22nd.
Okay, so just for the benefit of the people in the room, because it's a little difficult to hear. That we have not received the revised plan. And that you have had spoken with the applicant's attorney and that we are looking for, did you say April 25th?
May 22nd.
May.
May 22nd.
May 20th. Okay. For the pub, for a public hearing where the public can make comments.
They will do a presentation at that time. And then the public can comment on it. And then if appropriate, we can then vote on it.
Okay. And that is gonna be here in the Commission Chambers.
Correct.
Okay. Could you repeat the date again for everybody in the room?
May 22nd was when the, the plan would be approved, Lance? Is that what you said?
May 22nd.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
After that is done, we'll have this ordinance. The public hearing would be brought off the table. And then depending on how that, if there's a new ordinance to be introduced at that time, we would do that.
Now, we, I don't believe we need to do a new ordinance. There's not significant enough changes that are gonna occur. So it's just a continuation of the, of the public hearing to the 22nd. And then if, if appropriate, if we don't have any more comments after they do their presentation in the public hearing, then we can adopt it on second reading.
Got it.
Understood.
So the action that we're taking today is carrying over.
There's no action.
There is no action.
No.
No action.
Okay. So moving forward, we have no ordinance introductions. We have no ordinance or public hearing adoptions, but we do have a number of resolutions by consent. And then we're adding three today. So the first resolution by consent is 2025-151. This is authorizing the payout of former Chief Joseph Fussner. 2025-152 is authorizing the payout of funds for Philip Boyle, retiring from the Fire Department. Resolution 2025-153 is, uh, is, I guess, is Resolution State Injury. This is no bicycles on the boardwalk on Saturday, May 17th. Okay, this is for the Run Monopoly. So this is a, this is a temporary suspension of bicycles on May 17th from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 and allowance for the mona, a run called the Monopoly Series. Resolution 2025-154 is a resolution appointing members to the Venter City School Board. Any comments on that?
No.
Believe it's just the reappointment of two members, correct?
The reappointment, that's correct. The reappointment of two members that are up for reappointment right now. Those names are, Lisa?
James Quinlan and Lori Abbott.
James Quinlan and Lori Abbott. Yeah, it's been a while since I read that back up. Next is 2025-155. This is authorizing approval to submit municipal aid grant for, with the Department of Transportation. Do you wanna add anything to that, Lance?
Sorry. Get it off of it. Jim Rattell is asking for, it's an application for additional funding. I'm not sure, maybe Tom can fill it in, because I don't have it in front of me of driving, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll have that in front of me.
This is for the signalization, isn't it? This is, this is for the.
Atlantic Avenue.
Yeah, this is Atlantic Avenue signalization.
Yeah. This is to convert all of those lights to the same lights that we, actually the controls, not the lights, just the controls. The same type of controls we have on Venter Avenue.
Right. Great.
It doesn't require a match, I read, so that's good.
Does not require a match.
Yeah.
That's great.
So, so, so as always, Jim Rattell is, is looking out for the city of Venter and finding these kinds of grants for us that are really appropriate. That's a, that's an important, that's an important aspect. Next is 2025-156. Another grant approval to submit. And this is also for the Department of Transportation. I believe that is related. 2025-157 is one of a series of tax abatements. So 157 is a tax abatement for 5702 Winchester Avenue. 158 is a tax abatement for 126B North Portland Avenue. And 159 is a tax abatement for 102 South Oakland Avenue. And 160 is a tax abatement for 21B South Weymouth Avenue. And 161 is a continuation of a tax abatement for 6807 Winchester Avenue. And last one is, tax abatement is 162, which is a tax abatement continuation for 119 North Sacramento Avenue. Next is 163. This is authorizing part-time employment for the Department of Revenue and Finance. Beach Tag Checkers Recreational Aid. So these are two. This is for obviously the season coming up. And then we have 164, which is authorizing payouts for Thomas Grimley, retiring from the Fire Department. And 165 is a replacement of existing chiller at the library through cooperative pricing agreement and CM3 amount not to exceed $251,855. That looks like something I remember from 2016. Right?
Yep. We've had to do it again. These, these systems are just not lasting. This one, we're spending extra dollars to get it treated. Every piece of the chilling equipment will be dismantled and dipped in, I guess, galvan, it'll be galvanized or at least treated. So, and in hopes it will last longer.
That's what they said in 2016.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm with you. Don't look. I'm tired of putting one of you in that building myself, so.
I know. I know.
It's frustrating, but we are gonna have to, we are getting prices now also, not to talk about it now, but for the exterior improvements of that building. I met with Andy Vespratino a couple of weeks back, and he's working with a contractor that makes that material, those molded chair rails, if you will, to help us find those again.
Okay.
So.
Great.
On a, on a different topic, but.
No, no, that's fine. That's great. Thank you. And we are adding three resolutions on the bench. We're adding 166, which is accepting the resignation of Patrick Spina. And we have Resolution 167, which is authorizing the hiring of James Hoff as a laborer, seasonal employment, going from seasonal employment to full-time employment on May 18th. Any comments there, Lance? That's your department.
Um, it didn't work out with Pat Spina. He got an offer that's more money. That's the problem when you start out at Public Works, the salary's pretty low there. We've looked at other options to try and increase that, but Mr. Spina was able to get a job that provides him with a much higher salary. So he was sorry to leave, enjoyed the work, but he's gotta take care of himself and the family, so understand his, his leaving.
Understood. Thank you. And the last one that we're adding to the bench is 168, and this is additional seasonal part-time hires for this time's special events for, uh, for the, the summer season. And I, and I know that's a busy season. I'm sure they'll be utilized. Great. And then we will have approval of bills and payroll. We don't have any discussion items, as far as I know.
None that I'm aware of tonight.
And then we have public portion. So for any items that have been discussed so far, we ask you to come to the mic or leave or to the Zoom platform. And we ask that your comments are limited to three minutes per person if you wish to address the commission. Any comments about items that we've talked about so far? Now is the time for the public portion. Seeing no one stirring in the chambers? Anyone on? chambers, anyone on the Zoom platform that choose, that would like to comment on anything we've discussed so far in the workshop?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment or speak on any items spoken so far? Please make yourself known by either raising your hand or within the chat feature, and you'll be recognized.
You?
Nope.
All right. I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve minutes from the March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting and the March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five executive meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Uh, we have no ordinance introductions, um, no action. We have, uh, no action to be taken at the public hearing, it's carried over from April twenty-fourth. And we have one ordinance adoption. So.
No, that's the same, that's the ordinance that we're gonna carry over for the next meeting.
Right. So do we need to vote on twenty, no?
We're just gonna carry.
Right, I'm talking about the second one, twenty-two. So, uh, perfect, okay, oh, okay, so we're skipping over that. So it's in there twice, I see now. Got you, thank you. So moving on to, uh, resolutions to be adopted by consent. May I have a motion to adopt the resolutions twenty-twenty-five dash one-five-one through twenty-twenty-five dash one-six-eight?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Amy, may I have, uh, bills and payroll, please?
The payables for this period, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand five-hundred-seven dollars forty-three cents. Payrolls for this period, six-hundred-thirty-thousand four-hundred-eight dollars and eighteen cents.
Thank you, may I have a motion to approve bills and payroll, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I have no announcements or safety reports, but I will imagine we have any commissioner comments or reports? Starting with, uh, Commissioner Mento?
So, um, we've, we recently completed our audit, the auditors completed our audit. There are no recommendations, so that is fantastic findings, that there are no findings. And, um, it's being reviewed, and I would expect it to come before us in the near future to vote on it. Um, we also have some events coming up, and for the public, I'll go through them. The block party is Saturday. We have ninety vendors registered. And, um, which is, Donna's here tonight, it's what, twenty-some more than last year? More vendors than last year's block party? Okay. And it goes from ten to ten to five, okay. Okay, repeat that again, where? For people?
When the new.
Between Portland and Troy, okay, so that's, um, this Saturday.
That's right, kickoff at ten o'clock.
We have, um, tallied up our sponsors this year for the concerts. And, uh, we have sponsors totaling over seventy-eight thousand dollars for our concerts, and last year we had a little bit over forty-six thousand dollars, so, um, this is also very positive for the city.
I call that the Mento effect, this is your new, uh, department.
Usually it's Mento, bad luck. That's what goes on in my.
Congratulations, Donna.
Yeah, job, Donna. Um, and we, we have a lot of people supporting us, a lot of vendors supporting us. And, um, you're gonna see them all listed on a banner. So, um, there, there's quite a few, and I thank them for showing a little faith in Ventnor and, and supporting these concerts. Um, let's see, what else do we have coming up? Oh, we, 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 the past, the past, uh, April twenty-sixth, we had the shred event, and we shredded over five thousand pounds of paper.
Wow.
That's pretty amazing, five thousand pounds of paper, that would have all went into a landfill. All my old files, yes. Um. We issued seven permits recently for, most of them are private events, we do have Red Bull coming. Um, they're new this year, what, what is that for again, Donna?
The race at the, the beach patrol race.
Surf and rescue, that's what I was looking for, the surf and rescue, that's July fourteenth. And, um, the upcoming events to mark on your calendar, the farmer's market opens May twenty-third. I love this farmer's market, and I cannot wait for it to start, so May twenty-third, eight-thirty to twelve, and I know I'm in a lot of good company with that because it gets packed. It's a great farmer's market, and the volunteers have done a fabulous job over the years, and we have some new leads this year, and, um, it's gonna be great, they have seven new vendors too, so you're gonna see some new new things to look at and buy to eat or buy to wear or whatever they are. Um, we're opening the beach May twenty-fourth at ten AM at Beach Headquarters, so come on out, that's self-look in the beach. We're kicking off the summer concert series on May twenty-fourth, or we're kicking off the summer with a concert on May twenty-fourth at five PM at Ski Beach, that's Dorset and Burke. We also have the Kenny Whalen Run, nine AM, Atlantic and Newport Avenue on May twenty-fifth. And then we have the Memorial Day Ceremony, I invite everybody to please come out. And that's May twenty-sixth at nine AM at City Hall at the flagpole. And then we have Latour Down Beach coming up June one, and the American Cancer Society Bike Ride, June one. Um. We have seven concerts this year on Newport. And how many do we have, Donna, at Ski Beach? Ten. Plus July third at Newport, and plus this coming concert coming up, the kickoff. Is there anything you wanna add about our events? Or did we? We got it covered.
Donna, when is the first, uh, concert scheduled for the Newport Avenue this summer?
Twenty-eight.
June twenty. Thank you, recognizing.
Our new stage is being constructed. And, um, I'd like to thank again the beautification committee because they are donating, I guess you're still donating. Uh, can I, am I allowed to say?
See how this meeting goes.
Yeah. I think it's a hundred thousand dollars you're donating that the beautification committee raised through their events over the years, like Chef's Night Out primarily, right? And, um,
Which is.
And that, that's a, a, a good amount of money that's going towards us, so I, I don't know if we could have done it without you and without your team. Hundred thousand dollars towards us is, um, really helpful and really amazing that you were able to raise all that. I don't know anybody else that can say that, unless they're the American Cancer Society or something like that, right? So thank you. So I think that is it for me, I know we have some tax appeals coming up, but I don't have much to report on that now.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Langgraf, do you have any, uh, uh, commissioner comments or reports?
Just a couple of updates, uh, construction's ongoing out of Ventnor Gardens Plaza, uh, at the intersection there with, uh, Monmouth Avenue, we're doing the stormwater reconstruction out there. Pardon me. Also, we're getting close with the traffic signals on Ventnor Avenue, you'll see some of the new poles have been installed with new lights. We're still waiting for a couple of, of poles to arrive, and they should be finished up by Memorial Day. Um, the basketball court should be painting the court surface, if it's not done this week, it'll be over the next week to ten days. Uh, they had to wait a certain amount of time before they could paint it after the asphalt was put down. Um, we had some comments regarding the pickleball and tennis courts. Um, that area will be totally re, reconstructed, just like the basketball court, but that will be next year, those, that project is out to design right now. And and hopefully, construction in the fall and over the winter of next year. Um, that's, uh, pretty much it, other maintenance stuff, getting ready for the summer, Rick and his team, you'll see these guys out on the beach. The boardwalk getting ready for the summer. Um, you know, we're bringing on our, our summer employees, summer seasonal guys to start doing some of that work. Um, we're gonna start in force to start cleaning up behind the boardwalk. A lot of those areas collect a lot of trash over the winter, that'll be something that happens on a daily basis now that the summer season is coming through, uh, as well as cleaning the beach a, and those areas as well, so. That's pretty much it for now.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Langgraf, I will just add that I did talk to Rick earlier about the new lifeguard boat that's going at the plaza for that.
Ah, good.
He's working on that, I saw. Right.
All right, the public can't hear whatever Rick's saying.
So, so he's just mentioning that the, uh, that tomorrow morning at six AM, the new, the new boat will be installed. The, the owner, Mark Greco, is going to be irrigating it and adding plantings to that display. And that, um, it is a decommissioned twenty-fourteen boat, and the old one was beyond repair, but I believe they're gonna repurpose it as a, uh, display of some kind with, in parts. So nothing goes wasted in the, in the beach patrol. Um, but, um, it's a great, it's great, it's a great, uh, you know, it's one of the unique things about our, our, our city, I, I think it's, it's a nice welcome to Ventnor sign. Um, and I'm sure people will be excited about that. Um, and then I just have a few things I will add, that, uh, the Chef's Night Out is May eighteenth, unfortunately can only watch people do it because I believe it's sold out. A hundred and eight tickets. How many? Four hundred and eight tickets, this is the May eighteenth. This is the twelfth year, uh, every year there's, uh, different restaurants because the city of Ventnor, uh, has a way of incubating new and wonderful restaurants. This year, um, nineteen stops, so go hungry and go, and, um, it's a, it's a great, this year we're also gonna, I believe, uh, help with parking on, uh, on Atlantic Avenue in one space because it's, uh, there's a bunch on that street, we talked about that, and Ventnor Avenue as well. It's always a great event, um, I unfortunately will be out of town picking up my daughter, uh, uh, from abroad, but, um, please, but, uh, it's always a successful, we can't thank you enough for not only just your, um, your donation, but, um, you know, you were, you're, you're, you're one of the original, um, people that saw the need in Ventnor to bring, um, beauty to the streets and, and a sense of community, so it's really appreciated. At everyone there, including Peter and Mr. Drazio.
You started it off.
Yes, you did. Um, uh, just to mention about the block party, to be careful that, uh, Ventnor Avenue will be closed, there will be traffic rerouting, so please use Atlantic Avenue between Dorset and Rossborough, please be mindful of those detours when you're coming down Ventnor Avenue um, on Saturday. And there'll be a code red going out, so that's a good segue, please sign, uh, there's not, there may be people that are, uh, new to the area, we might wanna do another post. People coming in that don't, aren't aware of code red, it's always this time of year where we need to remind them to sign up for the OEM, uh, callback and the code red, so maybe we'll push out that as well. Um. Uh, there is a training exercise on the north baca Portland Avenue, there was one today, there'll be another one on Tuesday, May thirteenth, it is not an emergency, but you will see increased police presence there. Um, and, uh, also in terms of signing up, um, the Ventnor, uh, in the recreation department, there's, the rec desk is open for a number of camps that are still available, I believe, there's still some openings. Um, and also two more things, one is that we are, uh, uh, we have our SLEA, our, our, our class one officers will have, um, five new ones starting in the beginning of, um, uh, in beginning of June, after they, they finish their training. But we are enforcing more, uh, rigorously the, um, dogs on the boardwalk and the presence of, uh, electric vehicles on the boardwalk. Um, there were in seven days thirty-one calls, we're gonna continue that until the, um, until we feel that it's, uh, uh, understood, we're also increasing the signage on the boardwalk to show more of a impact that, um, dogs are not allowed on the boardwalk and that, um, electric vehicles are not allowed on the boardwalk, so look forward to those signs being switched out. Um, and then, lastly, for the boaters, the Ventnor Avenue, uh, Dorset Avenue is, uh, gonna be, until further notice, is in the down position. Um, so that is, uh, because of, uh, control issues, uh, that are, that are frequent with the bridge, so it is, uh, in the down position. And we're waiting on the counties to, uh, describe when it, uh, when that control position will be, uh, fixed, issues will be fixed, and it'll be back, so it's not, it's not a problem for boats that don't need the clearance, but for those that do, um, they're, they're gonna have to find, uh, they're gonna have to go out into the Atlantic Ocean, I guess. So.
Is that what I saw today, the guys?
Yes. Yes.
Fatigues?
Yep. Oh, no, no, that was something else. Yeah. That was, uh, that was something else, not aware of what that was, this was in a, this was in a, the, the training is happening in a, a residence that's being torn down, that's abandoned. So it's police tactical training.
Did you, did you say everything?
Yes.
Okay, so Lisa just reminded me to remind everybody to get their beach badges because they go up after May thirty-first, so veterans right now are free. Seniors are three-fifty through May thirty-first. And twelve and up are ten dollars through May thirty-first, and then June one, everything's twenty dollars, so get your beach badges now.
Veterans are always free.
Yes, but until May thirty-first. Or always? Okay, always.
Veterans are always.
Sorry about that, yeah.
Okay, that is all we have for commissioner comments and reports. Um. At this time, um, may I have a motion to open the meeting for public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, so at this point, we open the, uh, anyone who were to participate, uh, in the workshop or the, or the discussion on any, any topics regarding Ventnor City. Uh, we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Not seeing anyone star in the commission chambers. Do we have anybody, uh, raising a hand in the Zoom platform?
Anybody on Zoom wish to make comment on any items? Nope.
Nope. Hearing none, may I have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, may I have roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Do we have an executive session today? We do not. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, can I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.